Good morning. It is Monday, August 31st, 2020. The time is 10 o'clock and this is the regularly scheduled Montrose City Council work session. The first item on our agenda this morning, we do discussion items, and then the first one is State of Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division presentation. So I will turn it over to Lisa De Piccolo to introduce our guest speakers this morning.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum. I've got a little bit of an echo. I did turn it off. It should be unmuted. Yeah.
I want to thank everyone who has joined us this morning. We've got a lot of items on our work session and looking forward to some productive discussions. Ready?
I'm ready. Sorry for that.
No worries. Fantastic.
I am very happy to introduce our two representatives from the Liquor Enforcement Division today. Brian Turner is the Investigation Supervisor and Robert Darrow is the Agent in Charge of Licensing and Complex Investigations. They were very accommodating when we asked them to just be present today and give us some information, and I'd like to thank them for that.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
So I guess I don't know exactly how you want to, would you like us just to start with a little bit of overview? Or is this more, do you have questions and relate to what the council would like to ask us or for us to go over?
I think we were looking for you to give us a brief presentation on what exactly your, what your office or your agency does, and then how that interplays with our role as a city council and our local liquor licensing board.
Perfect. Well, I will, I'll start up with some of the enforcement stuff that we do. So the way that we are set up as an organization, we have an office in Grand Junction that currently has two investigators and a supervisor, and then an office in Colorado Springs and Lakewood. What the Grand Junction office does is by statute required to follow any type of complaint. So if we get a complaint, we're required to look into it. We'll look into that complaint at two levels. We'll do it off of a criminal level. If there's a criminal violation that we would charge somebody with and then file it with the local district attorney's office. If it's an administrative violation, we would take it to the state licensing authority, very similar to what you guys would do if you had a violation by your local police department on a liquor license establishment, and you wanted to take an action against the license itself, not against a person. And with that, you have the ability to issue warnings, suspend, fine, or revoke. If it's a license that's pending in a temporary status, you could also deny it. And so we would conduct any type of investigation based off of a complaint received, or if we were, one of the other things we do is we conduct inspections. So if we're in Montrose, Colorado, we'll go to the local licensed establishments, we'll go into the businesses, look at their licenses, make sure the folks didn't in conspicuous spot. If it's an on-premise consumption location, we'll go through the PHO orders and executive orders that are out right now, kind of review that with them, make sure they're following those details. And then we would go through their books, records, make sure their ordering process is right, and as well as if they have some sort of food service license, unless it's a hotel restaurant license, we'd want to make sure that they were meeting those mandates of serving full meals till 8:00 p.m. and that 25% of their gross revenues are coming from food sales. So that's kind of a brief overview of what enforcement does. Robert, you want to go over the licensing?
Yeah, and on the licensing side, thank you, Mayor, and council members, and Lisa, thank you for inviting us today. So yeah, and on the licensing side, the state licensing authority and the local licensing authority dovetail in a lot of ways because we're a dual licensing state. So any retail class of license first apply for their liquor license with the city, and then also the city will work in conjunction with the state on getting that license issued. The licensee will actually receive two licenses. They'll receive a license from the city and a license from the state. But we cannot approve that license until the city does. So we work pretty closely with all the local licensing authorities and cities and counties to issue the licenses. Just for reference, I don't think I can share my screen, but if I could just go over some of the helpful statutes, and I won't, you know, just in the, in the interest of brevity, I won't, you know, read through from the statute, but if I could just cover some of the relevant statutes for the council.
We can let you see the screen, so if that would be helpful, if you think, to us to follow along.
It may be, it may be. I just have a copy of our liquor code pulled up here on my screen, so.
Yeah, so if you go to the share screen button at the bottom of your Zoom window, I believe you have the, we've granted you the authority to share.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, let's see here. That was easy. Thank you. Not as, not as familiar with Zoom as I am with Google meets. Are you guys looking at a page that says the Colorado Liquor Code at the very top?
We are indeed, absolutely.
Perfect. So yeah, just very quickly, I'd like to just show you guys, you know, the parts of the code that, that we kind of work in conjunction with the light, with the local licensing authority on when it comes to issuing licenses. There are really this part three, and again, I'm looking at the liquor, the liquor code, which is Article Three, Title 44. I'm not an attorney, but maybe some of you guys are, but you know, we're also here to help interpret this code because our state licensing authority makes interpretations, and we also make rules. We, every year, we review about 20% of our rules, and we held, hold rulemaking hearings that the public or any interested stakeholder are welcome to come to. So we get a lot of questions, work in conjunction with licensing authorities when it comes to questions on the code. But if I could direct you guys to the part three, licensing in general. Licensing in general is going to cover a lot of the requirements of the local authority. It's going to cover what, how to do a needs and desires assessment of the neighborhood. So when you get a new application, you want to go out and assess the needs and desires of the local neighborhood and make sure that the inhabitants, the adult inhabitants actually won't object to a liquor license establishment in their neighborhood.
Can I get some clarification on that? You said you would go out and decide if there's needs. Is that, is that something we're supposed to go out? Because in my experience, what's happened is the liquor, the person applying for a liquor license has had the burden of proving that there is a need in the community. So when you say you go out, did you mean us?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if we go to, and this is on our website, it is searchable. If we go to that particular section, so before granting, "Licensing authorities shall consider." So that's what I meant is you shall, is that the licensing authority should consider. So the onus is usually on the licensee, evidenced by petition, petitions, remonstrances, or otherwise. So they usually do a petition in the neighborhood. Yeah, so thank you. Yeah, point of clarification there. But yeah, so licensing in general is establishing needs and desires. It's also talks about undue concentrations, so there are some considerations for undue concentration when it comes to certain license types, mostly taverns. You know, there's certain, certain rules that are, you can determine if there's an undue concentration of taverns in a certain area. It talks about licenses being separate and distinct. That's why we can't issue two different license types for the same building. It talks about possession of the premises. The applicant should have possession of the premises for the entire license period, either through deed, or lease, or other arrangement. It talks about distance requirements in 301. So you can't, you know, have an off-premise liquor license retailer within 500 feet of a school, for instance, unless the council has waived that requirement, or the town has waived that requirement. It also talks about establishing entertainment districts. So an entertainment district is a large area made up of multiple licensees that have agreed to work in coordination and have, and have people be able to purchase drinks within the entertainment district and walk around within it. So they have to work closely with the town on that, and 301 talks about how those establish, how those are established. If you keep going, 302 talks about renewals. Each license is required to renew every year. They're one-year license periods, and our state license will coincide with your local license expiration date. So we do that together with the, with the clerk's office. It talks about, it talks about transferring licenses and how that works. The local authority is responsible for issuing a temporary permit, so it gives those guidelines. That's in there, 303. It does talk about the state licensing authority and our issuance procedures if you are interested, denials of applications, and inactive license, what that means.
Can you give us an example of when we might grant the license at the local level, but the state would deny it? Like, when would that, kind of what would happen to make that happen?
Yeah, Brian might have a little more history on, he's been with the division a little longer than I have. Honestly, in my two years, we have not, we have not done that. Brian, can you think of any instances where that's?
Yeah, yep, absolutely. So this would not happen very often. Where it would happen, let's say somebody had a large state sales tax that they owed, where it would fall onto their character, or they had a criminal history that was not of something that we would want in the liquor industry. We could certainly hold a denial hearing at that time and deny the license after the locals have issued. But I can tell you, this does not happen very often.
So mostly the state would follow the local liquor board's lead, so to speak? Okay.
Exactly. I mean, this is, it's your community, so we would look at that there's a reason they want this in there. They met the needs and desires, so really, it would really have to fall under an unsavory character issue.
And that would be an unsavory character issue that we, we locally were maybe perhaps unaware of? Or, I mean, I don't think we'd overlook it, but perhaps there are local jurisdictions that would.
Right. So it could be something that was either overlooked, or if, like I said, it could be on the state level that you wouldn't be aware of. So if they owed a lot of state sales tax, we would look at that as a bad character, and we would deny on that aspect, and you would not have proven to that. We would certainly communicate it probably prior to it happening.
Okay, thanks.
So you were. Yeah, I think that's, that's probably the best example, Brian, is that, you know, state sales tax, because, because the local authorities don't have a way to check that, and then they come across our desk, and we see that they, they owe, or have a balance, or a lien, or something like that.
Does the state approve a liquor license once it's been approved by the local licensing board?
That really depends. So if there's, if it's a brand-new license and the applicant has applied for what's called a concurrent review, we will review it concurrently with the local authority, and we will approve those applications within about a week of the local authority approving the application. Transfer applications, the local authority does all of the, all of their groundwork and then forwards it to us, and we then do it as quickly as we can, but it kind of depends on when it's, when it's sent to us. So we really encourage folks to send things to us as quickly as possible. We wait for your approval, and then as long as they meet all of our criteria, we'll approve as well. So on a concurrent review, a new application, hopefully within a week. And currently, right now, we're about 30, we're about 60 to 90 days on new application processing times. So that's, that's about where we're at. We try to coordinate as much as we can, but you know, it can be anywhere from 30 to 60 days after you've approved. And so there's also, in the 300 series here, it talks about results of the investigation, which, which Brian was kind of just alluding to. You know, this is, this is talking about how the back, how the, how the license investigation is conducted, and then also some of the requirements therein, and then restrictions for applications. I'm sorry, that's what Brian was, was really referring to, when it talks about if they're not of good moral character, the applicant's not of good moral character, and what, 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 what steps to take in that, in that case. The license, the local authority and the state authority do have to consider, if it's criminal history, we do have to consider how long it's been since the last arrest, any type of restitution that the offender has accomplished. So there's no like set, if you have a felony, you don't get a license. It's more like, how long ago was your felony? What have you done to pay back society since then? And then it's kind of a case-by-case basis. So there's no hard and fast rules on who gets a license and who doesn't, more of a case-by-case basis and an overall picture type of scenario when we're doing the backgrounds, and then ultimately when you guys are doing the backgrounds as well. And that's in the statute. Let's see here. So issuing licenses, 309 is also very informational. It talks about all the different types of licenses that you, that local authorities are responsible for. And then, trying to think what else would be beneficial to cover today. There's the restrictions on the new applicants, and then, as Brian was talking about, the enforcement side of things, 443901. Our enforcement division will go out and really enforce, mostly what we do is in that 901 statute, and then also the local authorities, if they're police or sheriffs throughout in the field enforcing the liquor code. 901 is where we find a lot of those criminal statutes that, that Brian was talking about.
So, so does the liquor licensing board have a role in enforcement?
So we have, so you're, you're talking about the city liquor licensing board?
Yeah, I'm talking about, so in this case, our city council is our liquor licensing board. So I think I'd like some clarification on our role, the council's role on enforcement. So we talk a lot when we are talking to someone who is applying for a liquor license. We talk a lot about our expectations, that they, the procedures for carding people. We really want to make sure they have good procedures for not serving underage folks alcohol. But is that an example for, if serving someone who's under 21? Does the liquor, does the board, in this case, our council, do we have an enforcement role to go out there and, I don't know, check that they're doing that, or if we hear they're not? Is it up to us to, to call them and ask? I mean, what's our role in enforcement?
So really, what your role is, is to hear what occurs. So if the local law enforcement goes out and cites a bar for a person under the age of 21, you have the opportunity to take an action against that license through what's either called an order to show cause, or a notice of denial, depending on where the license application has been issued, and it's an active license, it would be an order to show cause. And basically what that does is it notifies the licensee, they have to come in front of the local licensing authority, and you guys present a case. You'd have the local licensing authority, city attorney on one side, the licensee's attorney, and then I would always suggest you have somebody who represents the board as well, and you could hold the hearing. Now, if it's not, if that's not something that you're interested in, you could always request the state to do that, and we would do the same type of thing. We'd go through the investigation, make sure that it meets all the elements, and then we would issue an order to show cause, and we could bring them in front of the hearing officer at the state level. Prior to doing that, what we, we always offer what's called a stipulation in agreement. So if somebody sells to a minor, we'll say, you know, you have the opportunity to go in front of a hearing, and you can present your side, we'll present our side. The hearing officer will be the, basically the individual who's going to say, yes, a violation occurred, and this is what your penalty is. Or you can enter with the state with, through a stipulation agreement. We're going to issue you a 15-day suspension, we'll allow you to pay a fine for half of that, and then we're going to hold the other half in abeyance for a period of one year. If the licensee agrees to that, then we'll conduct some follow-up, just to make sure they're no longer serving those minors, and then that would conclude the case. But they would always have that opportunity to go in front of the hearing officer and conduct a full hearing and be heard.
And I think the only thing that I would add is that, you know, any law enforcement officer, so your city police or county sheriffs can enforce the liquor code and any of the, any of the statutes there within. Especially, like you mentioned, mayor selling to someone who's under 21, that's in 443901, and it's a criminal violation if, if someone is to violate that. It's also a regulatory violation. So yes, the, the local authority has all of the, all of the authority to bring the licensee forward to account for any of those violations through those means that Brian was talking about. Either an order to show cause, the state does assurance of voluntary compliance. There's just legal, legal licensing remedies that, that we have, that, that also the local licensing authority has as well.
So you're saying it's our discretion whether we want to defer to the state to do that? Or we can do it, we can do it at the local level, or, or we can do it at the local level and the state also does it? I mean, the enforcement part, like, for example, having that trial, someone had served someone under 21?
So if you guys at the local level decided to take the case, one of your officers went out, they cited somebody for underage inside of a bar, and the local licensing authority took an action against that licensee for that violation, then the state would not. We wouldn't, we don't make a practice of hitting somebody twice, basically.
Okay.
But if you didn't do that, and you didn't want to, you didn't do local hearings in regard to penalty aspects of violations of liquor code, and you wanted the state to do it, those officers could send the reports to us, we'd do the review. If there was any follow-up investigation, we would do that, and then we would take action at the state level.
Okay, I think that's the process with which we're most familiar, because we, we have, I believe, deferred to the state previously to, to enforce. I mean, our police will be the ones on the ground, but then we leave it up to the state to hold that hearing and deliver the.
The violation penalty.
Yeah, violation, for lack of a better word, yeah.
I think, well, I think we have done some of those in the past when we were in difficulties.
Is that Stephen Alfon or our city attorney, want to sign in?
So I think Roy and Dave probably remember when council did a hearing on underage service on a specific bar we're having problems with. Usually, we do defer to the state. However, when the city police actually take action, think of it like a plea deal. Very few cases actually go to trial. Most of the time, if the city is able to reach a penalty agreement with the offender, so it doesn't come to you. It comes to you if they're contesting it, or want to fight it, or think they can get a better deal from council. So, but most of the time, I mean, we're a small community, all the bars know our police officers, and also, I really don't like putting council in the situation of butting heads with businesses when we can't have the state do that.
Okay.
I was thinking, on one of those, didn't we put a temporary hold on their liquor license on one of those issues?
Yes.
One question I have down here on 906, warrants and searches and seizures. Could you explain that a little bit?
Sure. It, it's basically a template for a warrant. So if we were to gather information, as, as the licensing authority, local and state, we have the opportunity to conduct inspections, go through books and records and everything else that's on that liquor license to include their surveillance systems. Now, if we had predetermined information, so somebody says, oh, they're storing a kilo of cocaine in the refrigerator, we would actually not utilize our administrative powers, we'd have to use our criminal powers to go forward with a warrant. And basically, that's what this is, is just an outline. Most of the times, we would probably coordinate with the local police departments in those situations, work with them to go to the district attorney's office to get a warrant to search the business.
An example of that would be perhaps somebody illegally distilling or brewing?
Yeah, very well could be, yep, because distilling you cannot do, so we would need a warrant to go into a person's residence or location, because they don't have a license even.
Moonshiners.
Yep. Don't have a lot of those anymore. But I got to admit, the last one we did have was in Montrose County.
Oh, you said county, not Montrose.
Yes, I did. It was in the woods.
I've got a question, and I get, what, what is council expected to know about the liquor control license? Or I'm not asking this, what are we supposed to know about all of the rules regarding liquor in Colorado? There's been a discussion in our community, it involves me, I don't know if you guys know who I am. I'm Dave Bowman, and I made a mistake last summer and entered into an agreement with a local establishment where that establishment provided a percentage of their sales to the Montrose Summer Music Series to help pay for the bands for a concert series that we put on for free for the community. And it's been said that as a city councillor, I should have known that that was breaking the rules. Are councillors expected to know the liquor laws to that level? I mean, what are, what, what are your expectations of city councillors across the state and our knowledge of the liquor laws?
Yeah, so that's, that is a challenging one, because the liquor code's a very large code, but you are the local licensing authority. So you are the board that basically issues, denies, and revokes those licenses. I don't know that there can be any expectations that you're going to be an expert in liquor code because of the vast amount of stuff you are also doing. And so that's why it's really done on an individual basis, and then you deal with your local attorneys on issues that arise to get you the knowledge base of that code that you're running into an issue with. So I mean, it would be a challenge to know everything inside the liquor code. I've been doing it for 20-some years, and I still don't know it all, so.
And I think, I think from the licensing standpoint, you guys have excellent liquor licensing clerk in Lisa De Piccolo, and so we, we're just, we're just working in conjunction with the councils and the licensed, local licensing authorities, and, and checking that they, they are checking and verifying all of the licensing requirements before issuing or renewing licenses. But, but Lisa's very well versed on all of, all of those.
Yeah, I feel like we've done a really good job on the licensing requirements. Council's gotten a lot of information from our city clerk and from our city attorney whenever we review a new license application or a transfer. I guess it's just a follow-up to that. Are we then, are we then responsible for how they conduct their business holding that liquor license? And how much of the liquor code are we supposed to know after granting them a license? I think that's where we would appreciate some help and clarification, because I don't want us dropping the ball if that's something we're supposed to, if we're supposed to know the liquor code forwards and backwards and be vigilant and looking around our community, or if, if that's where we can rely on the state?
Well, like I said, I think it's, it's more reasonable to know when something's coming up. I would suggest if you're going to do anything associated with liquor license, then feel free to contact us, and we could definitely give you an answer. But there's so much involved in the liquor code to be, to have the knowledge of every aspect is pretty hard to say that's something you should have. It's more of when something comes up and is brought to your guys' attention, that's when you would work with your city attorneys to make sure that you, all the elements were basically met to take an action against that license, or not met, and then you wouldn't be taking an action. I, but I would, let, let me go back a little bit too on that. If you're going to be doing something in conjunction with a license that you guys issue, I would suggest you give us a holler ahead of time, and we would go through any portion of what you're doing to make sure that you're accurate and that there was no violations associated with what you were trying to do with that licensee.
Brian, would you, Brian, would you agree that there's a lot of the code that city, even police, just don't get involved with? Such as invoicing, there's, you know, there's sections about what percentage has to be purchased from a wholesaler versus how much could be purchased from a retailer, which include, which would be auditing their books, things like that. You would agree that the city, both police nor council, get into the operation of the business? That's something that liquor enforcement does.
Yeah, unless you have a specific unit that is doing liquor enforcement, then you probably wouldn't even delve in that aspect. You'd be dealing with more of the public safety style stuff, sale the antox, sale the minor, things that truly affect the community on its face.
And then the decisions that council is most likely to be making in, in licensing are going to be needs and desires of the community, and then the good moral character of the applicant. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, Robert, I'll let you.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I, I would agree with that, um, just that they've, you know, there are distance requirements, um, needs and desires of the neighborhood, um, and moral character of the applicant, those are probably the, the main, the main ones. And those, pretty much everything covered in that, um, that three hundred series, um, is, is, is probably what I would kind of just brush, brush up on or just know, um, you know, and reach out to us like Brian said with any, with any questions.
So, Robert, I have a question about that, when we talk about the neighborhood, we have traditionally used our entire city as a neighborhood. Is there a point at which, um, a city becomes big enough that we would divide it up and not think of the entire city as a single neighborhood? Can you help? Cause that's. Or how does that, how, who decides what a neighborhood is? Are we deciding that it's our whole city, or is there an actual metric that we meet?
The only guidance the liquor code gives in this respect would be there's a ten thousand inhabitants, um, um, rule for, for, um, distance requirements, but nothing that says, um, how to delineate or establish neighborhoods. I think that, um, according to what's in the liquor code, I think that really is, um, up to the, up to the city council. Um, but, uh, yeah, it says, it says, you know, it, off-premise retailers can be within fifteen hundred feet of one another if the, uh, city is, is, uh, uh, more than, um, ten thousand inhabitants. If it's less than ten thousand inhabitants, then the off-premises retailers have to be three thousand feet apart from each other. But that is the only, um, black and white, uh, number that the code gives. So I, I do really think that it would be, um, up to you guys to determine that, you know? If you're a small enough community where you think the community is the neighborhood, I don't think anyone's going to argue with you on that, um, from the liquor, liquor licensing standpoint.
I have a question about the entertainment district and the multi-licenses. Is that something that can be done on city property, or is that have to be something that is a commune property of the license holders?
So it, it can be done, uh, it generally does include an area that's shared by the license holders. Um, so if it's, if it's, um, say there are a few licensees on Main Street and you guys want to shut down Main Street on a Friday night and put stanchions up, um, that could become your entertainment district. Um, and so it's usually kind of like a shared, it could include, um, uh, city property. Um, but it's usually like, uh, a shared area where people can access by foot, um, the entertainment district from the licensed, uh, the traditional licensed premises. So, um, usually what we see is like, if you think about a ski resort or something like that, um, there's like, uh, there's, there's, there's a large area where people can go to various licensees and then walk around in the kind of a common area with, with a drink. Um, there are a couple of towns, uh, Greeley does one in their kind of old, old town part of town, um, you know, where, where it's, it's basically just a common area that connects licensees and people can walk about, uh, in that common area with, uh, beverages.
Could it be somewhere, uh, just like a city plaza or a city park that is designated as that? That does not necessarily have the licensees adjoining?
Um. You know, I'd probably have to get back to you on that, I think, I think the license, Brian, it has to be contiguous, is it not?
It, it does, yeah, because basically it allows for the individual to purchase a drink from one establishment, directly walk outside of that business, so the license has to be contiguous to each business. And then it allows them to walk back into that same business with the same drink. And then walk anywhere in the common area that's not a, additional licensed premises.
It basically takes away that sign that I think we've all seen before that says, don't take alcohol beyond this point. Like, it's, it's the solution to creating an area where you can do that? Okay.
Yes, yes.
So if we had a whole bunch of restaurants on Main Street, it would maybe be worth.
We could do the plaza area along Main Street. But if you think about it, when Ride the Rockies was in town two, three years ago, that's what we did.
But that was a special event kind of, permanent versus a permanent, this is a way to get a permanent.
Right, right, yeah, I'm thinking permanent, so it's something we could establish to give our, our license holders an opportunity to serve food and beverages with expanded seating outside, where the people, persons can take their drinks outside as well.
Well, we can expand the license.
And I hope this is a, this is a discussion you can have without these guys.
I know, I have, but we can extend the license holder to the sidewalk, but thi- this would allow them to walk down to the next block, for example.
I'm thinking of the parklets.
Well, we can, that we can do right now by just expanding their boundaries to include us, we've already do that.
Well, yeah, but that, what I'm getting to is that we make a block, make an entertainment zone.
Of all parklets.
That all the parklets are connected.
So the parklet isn't associated with a particular li- license?
Correct, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, we have taken up the half hour of your time that we asked for, gentlemen, does anyone have any further questions for them?
Yeah, I have one, uh, in the retail sales. You stipulated that they have to be at least fifteen hundred feet apart off premises, off, I'm talking about retail sales.
Yeah, like liquor store.
Uh, what's, what does that, why is that, I guess that's fifteen hundred foot requirement there?
I think it's just due to concentration, and Brian probably has a better history on this than I do, but, um, it's just a, a concentration, uh, aspect of the liquor code, um, so, yeah. Brian, do you have any?
Really, it was established when the retail liquor stores were allowed to have multiple ownership, that was part of what was written into the, the bill and approved. So, um, the reasoning behind that is the way that the legislature, uh, determined it. So I don't have a, uh, I can't give you the why, uh, exactly, but I would go with Robert. My guess is that they were basing it off a concentration. And, um, when three-two beer changed to strong beer, it, I think there was some thought process about helping liquor stores out with not having a bunch of three-twos pop up all over the place as well and new liquor stores.
Do we, as a home rural city, have the ability to override that with a local ordinance?
Uh, no, no, the only, um, distance requirement that you guys can override is the five hundred foot distance requirement to a, to a school.
And we, and we actually did that within the last few years. Okay, anything else? Gentlemen, thank you very much for spending some time with us to help us, um, understand our role as the liquor board locally and how we play in the licensing and how our, our role is in the enforcement, it's really appreciated.
Very much so.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda this morning is Montrose Community Foundation update. Um, I see that the, um, Montrose Community Foundation Executive Director Sarah Plumhoff is with us. Good morning, Sarah, thanks for joining us.
Good morning.
Good morning, what can you, um, take it away, it's back the floor.
Okay, um, I also wanted to introduce Carol Friedrich, she's the, um, president of the Community Foundation Board, and she's been the president for about three years, so Carol's here too.
Good morning, everybody, thanks for joining us.
Sure. Um, do you all, can you all see the presentation, do I need to share it on my screen?
Uh, we have it in our packet, but if you share it on your screen, then anyone watching this video live or later will be able to see it as well. So I think that's really helpful.
Okay, is that, can you?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you so much for having us today. Um, it's one of my favorite things to do is to come here each year and talk a little bit about, um, our partnership with City of Montrose. So our formal partnership began, began in two thousand thirteen. Last year, the City of Montrose gave us thirty thousand dollars, um, in community enhancement dollars that we included with our grant cycle for the community. So our grant cycle is historically in the fall, uh, we receive the applications, we review the applications, and then we award the dollars at the beginning of the year. So in two thousand nineteen, we took all the applications, we awarded the, um, the grant committee awarded the applications, and then we handed the money out at the beginning of twenty twenty. And that's called kind of a two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty cycle. Um, last year during our grant cycle, we gave out sixty thousand dollars to twenty-six organizations. So thirty thousand of that was City of Montrose dollars and thirty thousand of that was community foundation dollars. And those dollars come from funds that we have and also from, um, the interest and income that's earned on, um, our endowment fund that we have for community grants. So that's where that money came from. That is an overall picture for last year, um, July first, um, ending June thirtieth of this year. The Community Foundation granted out eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to our local and regional organizations. And this has been a banner year for us, um, some of this has been about hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we gave out in COVID relief funding through our, um, Montrose Emergency Relief Fund. Um, but the rest of that was given out in funds that supported community projects, um, including scholarships and grants like Boys and Girls Club, um, for their capital campaign. And also, um, we gave a large fund to, um, the city for the Save the Sculptures, uh, project. And that was at the beginning of our last fiscal year, so that was a, quite a large grant for us as well. Um, we try to promote this partnership as much as we can. Uh, when we did the grants, um, the grants reception in February, we invited city council members to be there for the picture. Um, I know we posted on Facebook a thank you to the city. Uh, we also mailed out about a thousand, eight hundred to a thousand, um, one-pagers to our, during our appeals, um, mailing last December. Um, and it's a one-page, uh, one sheet that has a front and back page to it. And the very top of the beginning of the page says, um, enhancing community through partnership and describes our partnership a little bit. So we try to do our best to really promote our partnership. Um, and since two thousand thirteen, um, your community enhancement dollars that have been granted out is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Next page, I'm just going to go over briefly, uh, where your dollars went last year. Um, starting from the top, we have, uh, two thousand dollars that went to Region Ten for their aging and disability. They have a program where they pay for, um, mi- minor home repairs for disabled people or elderly people who are still living in their homes. So two thousand dollars went to support that. Um, two thousand dollars went to All Points Transit, uh, they went through a pretty large, uh, strategic planning program the last year, and one of their, um, opportunity points was their volunteer driver program, uh, which takes mobile, um, usually elderly, but mobile people who can be driven to, um, medical, medical appointments like in Grand Junction, um, and other types of appointments, um, through their volunteer driver program. And so that two thousand dollars went to support that. Um, each year, we've supported the Common Ground Kids Aid, this is the Food Backpack Program. Um, the five thousand dollars actually bought nineteen hundred and seventy-six backpacks. Um, last, two years ago, they had two hundred and thirteen kids that were involved in the program. Um, that's two hundred and thirteen kids that received backpacks a week for food, uh, which is a total of about sixty hun- sixty-eight hundred for a year. So your almost two thousand backpacks really helped out, um, to support that program. And I know numbers have just gone up since then. We had two thousand dollars that supported a program through Colorado Mesa University. Um, they do a concurrent, um, enrollment program for career in tech, technical education. Um, and this program was to help loan textbooks. So some of the kids that were enrolled in this from the high schools, um, the school district supports the cost of the tuition, but not the support, or not the cost of the textbooks. And so this two thousand dollars was to help some of those kiddos, um, with those textbooks. Next is Hope West, um, this was to support their palliative care program. They have about a hundred and fifty patients who are in that, and the twenty-five hundred dollars went to support costs for those programs. Next, the Montre- Montrose Bicycle Alliance. I know that the city has a great relationship with this organization, they're really trying to make, um, Montrose a, a hub for safe bicycling. The twenty-five hundred dollars went to support some operating costs for them to be able to, um, extend their operations, um, a little bit of some salaries and also to be able to promote their safety and convenience, uh, with their Safe Routes to Schools program that they did last year. Next, we had fifteen hundred dollars for the Montrose High School, um, mountain biking team. Um, they shared a pretty great story with us, there's about twenty kids that were on that team last year, it's a pretty new program. Um, but they shared a, a story about how, you know, they're often about two hours away or, or further away from Montrose for their competitions. And, um, they felt like, uh, supporting this would really show support for them, for people who wouldn't necessarily jump in their car and travel two hours to go see their competitions. Um, and they also had days where it was ninety degrees and days where it was twenty to thirty degrees. And so they'd been huddling with the Manitou Springs team underneath their tents, um, for a few years now. And finally, they had asked, uh, us to support the cost of a, a, a ten by twenty tent with some sidewalls in it. So that fifteen hundred dollars went to help support the cost of that tent. It's not the entire cost of the tent, but we thought it would give them some support. The next is the Montrose Memorial Hospital, uh, we gave them a thousand dollars to buy some end-of-life booklets for families. Um, they purchased, they purchased, um, let's see, a thousand booklets called Five Wishes. Uh, basically helps people kind of walk them through options for medical interventions, anything from that to advanced directives and funeral arrangements. So once the individual's gone through the entire booklet, it's pretty much laid out everything they need for end-of-life. Um, they're partnering with Hope West and VOA, um, and Region Ten to distribute those booklets and train people on those booklets. And so, um, a thousand dollars went to buy a thousand of those booklets. Next, we had the Montrose Medical Mission. Um, they help negotiate medical bills and payment, and offer payment assistance for people who are uninsured. So three thousand dollars went to go and support that cause. Four thousand dollars went to support the Partners in Integrated Care, the PIC place. Um, it's a fairly new, uh, renovation of a building that started a few years ago. Uh, when they built the building, they were told at the time that the roof did not need to be replaced. And so a few years later, they got to the point where the roof did have to be replaced. So this four thousand dollars helped to, um, make that happen. Three thousand dollars to River Valley, um, this is kind of an immediate needs. Um, they have, they have, uh, caseworkers that work with their clients, um, and help meet needs that aren't met in other places. Um, they need food cards, they need money for prescriptions, they need a gas card, um, that's where these three thousand dollars come into play. And then last is Time Bank of the Rockies, um, I don't know if you've ever visited their website in the past, but it was pretty old, um, and not very user-friendly. And so we offered to give them some assistance in order to, uh, create a new website, and so they did that with the fifteen hundred dollars. Um, so that's it, that's thirty thousand dollars that were, um, that was given out last year. Um, some of these are still in place, for instance, the mountain biking team, that tent was going to be for the twenty twenty season. And I don't know that they're having a high school mountain biking te- season this year, but I think they're doing kind of virtual competitions. And, um, I know also that the textbook program through CMU will be taking place this fall as well. So, um, we ask for reports from each of these organizations and we receive stories from each of these organizations, and I'm happy to share those with you if you'd like. So, looking forward to two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Um, a- as usual, we always award our grants for people who are providing services and programs in different, um, areas of need. We've identified arts and literature, basic needs, community development, education, health and wellness, and recreation. Um, we are hoping to have our grant cycle open this fall, um, and hopefully in September. I know tomorrow is September, so we're looking at the middle of September. And then closing it in October, um, after about a month or so. We're trying to push the deadlines up on this because our, um, grant committee team was kind of getting hung up around Thanksgiving and Christmas when it came to reviewing these, um, proposals. And so we're trying to kind of get that taken care of, um, prior to the holiday season. Um, something different that we're looking to for this year. So last year, we started to move towards not offering as much support for operations, um, and really trying to get more into programming. And if we offered operational support, we would do it on like in every other year or every third year basis. Um, things have really changed just because of, of what happens with the pandemic and the way that nonprofits are able to do some of their programming operations right now. So we're really going to use this grant cycle to gain insight into the community needs and try to be responsive to community needs. Uh, one of the things that's fortunate about a community foundation is that we have a lot of flexibility in what we can fund. So if you're the Rocky Mountain Health Foundation or Colorado Trust, um, your initial pots of money kind of force you to support certain things. And one of the things about community. And one of the things about community foundations is we can be a little bit more flexible when it comes to that. So I think for this year, the grant committee's had some discussions. What we're going to talk about is operating or offering funding for the needs. So if it's operations or services related to COVID or programming, we really just kind of want to see what's out there. So I think the application will be more of tell us what you need and tell us how much you need. And then we'll look at those needs and kind of assess what the needs are with the organizations and then make decisions from there. It's going to be harder for the grant committee. It's hard to receive grants, applications, and look through them all and prioritize as is with how we've done it in the past. But I think it's going to be a little harder this year, but we're up for the challenge. I think what's also going to come out of that is we'll see that there's a lot of organizations that have received a huge amount of funding through other foundations because they're providing needed services, like any kind of medical or food operations or housing. Some of our organizations have received hundreds of thousands of dollars for support with those right now because of all the funding that's out there versus some of the other organizations, like Girls on the Run, or maybe some that have to do with more mental health services or mentoring services. So those are organizations that are providing services that are enhancing our quality of life, but maybe aren't necessary, aren't, not necessary, but vital to existing for people. And so I think we want to look at those enhanced services and see if we can help some of those nonprofits because they haven't been able to get as much funding at this point in time. We're going to update our online application. We're also going to do a conversation as part of the application process. So what I'd like to do is get the applications, review the applications, pick the ones that we really want to focus on, and then have like a ten-minute conversation with either the executive director or somebody who runs the programs, just to kind of get a better understanding of what's going on in the industry as far as transportation or medical or food security or housing, just to kind of learn a little bit more about the community. We'll continue to seek diversity. Last year, we had our application available in Spanish, and we had a page that was translated into Spanish. I don't think we actually got any Spanish applications in, but we're continuing to try. And we also have a grant agreement for recipients that's in place for this new group. So the next group that gets a grant will have an application and agreement to fill out with us. And then they need to follow up with certain data points and things that we can collect. So I know I'm talking a lot, but we're just trying to go with the flow here with our, with our grants. And we're hoping that you guys would want to support us in that again. Also want to extend the opportunity for you all, if you do decide to give us some grant money, is to decide if there's certain things that you want to support with your grants as far as no operations or only programming, or if you really want to focus on services that are helping COVID. So want to be able to give that opportunity to you as well.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. And is that a good time for questions? Were you, were you done?
Yeah, no, I'm done. Now's a great time. Unless Carol.
I was interrupting, but I wanted to.
Let me just see if Carol has anything to add. Carol, is there anything that you want to add?
I just think that it's a great opportunity to, to use these funds to support people from birth to death, so throughout their entire lifespan and in a variety of different ways. And so we just feel very privileged as a community foundation to be able to leverage these dollars to be able to serve the community. As we talk about recovery from COVID, we are using the language of resiliency, which I'm sure many of you have heard before, that this isn't just an event, an easy event to recover from. And so we really want to strengthen, you know, our, our community nonprofits to be resilient, to be able to, you know, survive this period of time. And so we're pleased to do that. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for being a partner with us. It's much appreciated because I know the city wants to contribute and really help in our community. And prior to this partnership with the community foundation, all of these organizations would come in front of council, and council would make decisions about each of these. And really, that, I think our, our time is best served talking about policies and ordinances. And you guys are the experts on what our community needs. So thank you so much for taking that, taking on that role on behalf of the city and letting the city contribute money. And then you guys get the hard job of deciding where to invest that money in our community. So thank you for taking that off of our plates, so to speak.
Yeah, so for full disclosure, I am on the board of the Montrose Community Foundation. And I have not had an opportunity to vote on funding for the community foundation. And this year, I will recuse myself when it comes time to vote for that funding. Having said that, I am absolutely thrilled with the community foundation supports our community and our local valley and some of our inhabitants that may not have an opportunity for funding sources.
Does anyone have any questions or comments that I'd like to?
I would just echo what you said, Barbara. It's a terrific service for our community. And as Barbara said, takes kind of the burden off of us on council and gets the money where it really does the best good. So thank you, Sarah, for all you guys do. The other lady, I forgot her name already. I'm sorry.
Carol.
Yes. Thank you again.
Beth, can you remind us what we have in our 2020 budget to contribute to this community foundation program?
I believe we did, we went up to thirty thousand, I believe. But I can double check if Chaney's on there. We increased it this year, so just look up.
So if we increase our part, does that mean you guys will still match it and increase donations across the community?
Depends on what the market's doing, Barbara.
That, that makes sense. I can appreciate that.
No, we, we do have other funds within the foundation that are kind of at our discretion. So we try to use funds from some of those. We try to use, take grant monies from some of those funds to match things that are going on. We also may use some of the COVID fund dollars if we still have some money left in that emergency relief as well. So there will be a lot of funding this year.
Fantastic. And perhaps that's something that we can talk about as well, is if we have additional CARES Act money that we want to see distributed to our community, that we partner with you on that as well because you are in a position to identify the community needs. That's what you guys do in day in, day out. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thanks for your support.
We are planning to have that discussion relatively soon. Kendall's tallying up all of our hard expenses, the reimbursement, and then we'll have a significant amount of money left over from our allocation.
Okay. Great. Well, we'll look at investing even more in our community and really helping with that resiliency. Anything else, anyone? Great. Thank you so much for joining us this morning, Sarah and Carol. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Good day. So next on our agenda this morning, item C is Eighteen Ninety Homestead Apartment Development Project. And we are joined this morning by Matt Hiles and Steve Stevenson. But I will at this point turn it over to City Manager Bill Bell for an introduction to this.
Sir.
Great, thanks.
So just to let everybody know, we've been working on this with, with Matt and his team for quite a long time. We've talked, just had initial discussions months ago, about, actually years ago, about the need for apartments in our community. And, and over the years, the economy here's changed. The amount of growth has changed over the last several years after the recession. And with the establishment of the URA, we've been working and talking about apartments over there, Colorado Outdoors area. Well, we've met with Matt, and we think we finally talked him into doing apartments in our community. So we're really excited about that. As all of you know, Matt's been a developer here in Montrose for a very long time. And as I tell everybody, I think Matt's changed the entire face of our community for the better. And so we appreciate everything he's done in the past. And we're excited to talk about this particular project. So Matt and Steve will go into logistics on where exactly it is. They'll talk through some of the drawings that you have and, and give you an overall feel of the project. As far as the community's impact, the memo that was in your packet will be updated when I send out an email without effect after meeting with Matt Friday morning. And he can tell us more about it. But I guess HUD restricted the number of units as part of the project. So originally, we were talking about a hundred and ninety-two. It's actually a hundred and sixty units. So that will change the numbers that were in the, in the memo and, and change the overall scope as far as the financing piece of it and partnership piece. But the overall impact doesn't change. It's still multifamily apartments, which we are in dire need of. And we did our household community survey in 2016. One of the highest priorities based on our community's input was the need for multifamily rental housing in the form of apartment complexes. We did some research several years ago to try to figure out, when was the last time in Montrose a market-rate apartment complex was built? And we couldn't find one of any significant size. There's small pockets here and there, five to ten units. But most or all of the apartment complexes in Montrose has been subsidized low-to-modern income housing. So we're not talking about that today. We're talking about market-rate workforce housing. So there aren't income restrictions. Police officers, teachers, nurses, all of the front-level workers in our community who are making entry-level to mid livable wage will be able to live in these really nice market-rate apartments. And, and then we'll be working in some other areas of our community to expand the low-to-modern income and housing because it all makes up a big puzzle, little pieces here and there. So please know that the numbers will be updated. So today at the work session, our idea is to just hear the concept from Matt and his team and digest that a little bit. And then if we want to move forward in more detail, it'd be coming back to a regular council meeting in the future for a vote. Very similar to what we've done with the URA in the past, although a few little wrinkles here and there. And I'll be talking about the financing side after Matt does his presentation. So I think Matt should be ready to go, and I'll just turn it over to him.
Thanks, Bill, City Council. I appreciate your time. In your packets, do you have the site plan? And then there was an elevation of what the buildings look like.
We do, yep. We have that in our, in our packet.
So I'll, I'll just run through this real briefly. And then if you have any questions, please, please fire away. This piece of property is located on Chupita Drive near Cobble Creek. It's founded by Chupita Drive, Cobble Drive, and Sixty-four Fifty Road. And the first phase, like Bill said, we, we're trying to expedite this project. So we, we could have pushed back a little harder against HUD and gotten a hundred and ninety-two approved. But they said, go for one sixty, and, and we did. So we're preliminary approves headed for a start date on physical construction, first crack out of the box in the spring. March first is what we anticipate. The first hundred and sixty units are all one- and two-story buildings. They vary in number of units, but like you can see on the site plan, they're kind of scattered around and, and have lots of open space. There will be a fit.
Is there a way we could share the site plan for people watching this meeting? Can someone share their screen with that? Or I just think if you're watching this and you don't have the pocket in front of you, you don't have all the information. Is that, Greg, can you make that happen?
If somebody has a digital copy of it.
It's in the packets.
Maybe while Matt continues to talk, you can, you can investigate whether or not you can throw the site plan up on the screen just because I think it's in twelvies.
Okay, thank you.
Information. Okay, I'm sorry. You can continue, Matt.
It's a lot easier when these meetings are in person and I can just whip stuff out, you know?
Always, always.
So one- and two-story buildings, about half of the units will have garages with them, oversized garages for, you know, the big vehicles that we have in, in our, our community. And there will be a fitness center, swimming pool, and of course, a community office in the first phase. We project about eleven hundred dollars average rent opening on the units. And that's about it. I, I would like to, you know, after Bill and I's discussion, we, you know, he said, you know, kind of tried to make a point of, of the benefit to the community of this project. And, you know, I can just speak from my own experience. I need to hire more quality employees, and they don't have anywhere to re, when they move to Montrose, housing is a huge issue. And granted, apartments may not be permanent housing, but these are very nice units in a very nice setting and should provide, if not permanent, at least temporary housing for families relocating to the area that, that we can put to work for, you know, forty-five, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year. That's my perspective on it. I know there's, there's needs from Telluride. I know there's other needs in the community. Like Bill said, you know, there's professionals, policemen, firemen, teachers, et cetera. So, you know, we, we're very confident that the project will be successful. And like I said, there's some selfish motivation because I need housing for people that I need for my company.
So you're talking right now about Phase One. So we're looking at the plan, and I see multifamily Phase One and multifamily Phase Two. Then to the north of that is senior living. So right now, are, are we just talking about multifamily Phase One?
Correct, correct. And, and we would take a bite of the senior stuff. But with the COVID, it's so up in the air what that's going to look like. We need to delay that a couple of years. But Phase One is a hundred and sixty market-rate apartments, non-age-restricted.
Okay.
Does that retention pond already exist, or is that something that needs to be constructed as well?
Oh, it has to be constructed. We, we did the boring out there. If you drive by the property, you can, you can see the, you know, physometers or the pieces of plastic pipe sticking out of the ground. But no, that's just basically a low spot that percolates very well that if we ever do get a, a big rain event, it'll, it'll fill that pond up. But it's open space, basically, you know, ball field-type open space. There won't be water standing in it. Matt, you've got type C, type A, type B, different types on these buildings. Can you explain that? In the, I can't. I'm not familiar enough with the site plan, and I apologize for that. Is there, is, is there not a compilation? Maybe Steve Stevenson can chime in. Is there not a compilation in the, on the, on the site plan? Steve, is that there? We must have lost him, but I thought there was on the, on the site plan. I thought there was a compilation of, of the quantities of different buildings.
Matt, all there is is one-bedroom versus two-bedrooms. So it doesn't go into details about site, type C or type B. I, I think to answer the question, those are probably just different configurations of the building and different combinations of either tucked-under garages or regular garages.
Exactly, and, and number of units. You can see on each, on each building, like Building Five, type B, two-story. I'll get you that information. I will follow up and get, get that better explained.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm studying in detail. What other questions or comments does, does council have for Matt about this project? I don't see any. Bill, do you want to, do you want to tell us a little bit about what council's going to be considering and what the city staff is recommending and what our options are, kind of that information?
Sure. So similar to when we had discussions at the URA regarding the apartment project there, the financing part of it's the creative side of it to where there's a lot of different options available to us in the URA, but they're not available to us on a, on a general project outside of the URA. So it'll be similar, but a little bit different than those past discussions as far as that apartment come. So with this one, what we've talked about and we would recommend, knowing that it's all based on whether Council wants to move forward at all. But if we do want to move forward with assisting with the project to get the housing online as soon as we can, there's our standard fee waivers that we do right now with commercial developments, any residential of size. So really, we've only had the apartment complex in the URA and now this one. But the standard permit fee waivers, with a new estimate based on one hundred and sixty, we would go through our normal process, which is not driven by City Council, but by staff of just waiving those fees. And so you have permit fees, plan check fees, the construction use fees, and the construction water piece. It's about four hundred and seventy-seven thousand in waivers. So that isn't hard cash that we're pulling out of our budget. It's opportunity cost to the city. And then we, like we have done many times over the last seven or eight years, we would invest in the infrastructure, the property improvements, not the building of the apartments themselves, but the infrastructure to go along with the project. And so our estimates, we would put about three hundred thousand dollars as a sewer project, four hundred thousand as a water project. We would just build that into twenty-twenty-one's water and sewer budgets. It'd be budgeted, it's public infrastructure, and so it'd just be a budgeted water and sewer public infrastructure project. And then even this will be new to Matt because I was just thinking over the weekend and just sitting here this morning. To minimize the general fund contribution to the project, we normally would have to, Council approves, general fund paying the tap fees to make the enterprise fund whole because the water and sewer fund needs to be made whole for our customers. And so what we've been doing recently is we'll loan money from the water and sewer fund to a URA project, for example. But in this case, we budgeted as a regular water and sewer project. But then you still have the capacity fees, the meter fees, the cap fees. That would be part of that building permit portion of the project. I think we could draft an agreement between the city, general fund, and our water and sewer funds for the impact fees. So that is all of the unit fees. When you're looking at a building permit and it has unit fees for sewer and unit fees for water, those are really just impact fees. And so they don't go to cover the cost of construction. They don't go to cover the tapping fees, the actual tapping of the water and sewer lines. It's just a fee that goes toward future expansion of the wastewater treatment plant for sewer or the maintenance and replacement of water lines and sewer collection systems. And if we did an agreement between the general fund and our enterprise funds saying that at a later date, when that impact is actually realized, we will make the utility whole, that minimizes the contribution from a general fund necessary now to partner on the project. And so we could get our general fund contribution down to about three hundred and forty-five thousand for the project. And so that, for Matt's side, we're covering the public infrastructure piece out of our water and sewer fund. So as the developer, he doesn't have to focus on that. We're doing the fee waivers under the building permit, which saves bottom line dollars for the developer to help them put that into their project. And then we would contribute a little bit from the general fund to go toward the overall project. As a reminder to everyone, we don't collect property taxes in Montrose as a city. So with apartments, you can't do, it's hard to do, a traditional S I D type of arrangement where you can buy the lot and at that time, the purchaser of the lot pays that. It's apartments and they're rentals, so you can't really go down that traditional route. And so it requires a little bit of creative financing on it. But that's what I would be recommending if we want to move forward. We would fine tune all the numbers, of course, based on the new information we have. Get everyone on Council a full digital copy of the building permit fee estimate and all of those things. But just to give you kind of that big picture, what we're looking at, what we think we could make work, those would be the numbers we'd be looking at for this Phase One.
So are the streets in this project city streets or are these private streets that are in a development? Do you know what I mean? Are these private streets or city streets?
I think, well, they would be public, but Scott Murphy would be the best to address any questions on specifics of that. But they would be public streets going through and it's public infrastructure as well.
So the city would be responsible for maintaining, maintenance and so on on the streets.
Well, Scott has, wants to add anything if I'm incorrect on that?
Yeah, sorry. I just had to get shifted there. So I think the main road to the middle would likely be a city right of way. Has the same flavor of that, you know, the kind of interior parking lots. A lot of that would remain private for multiple reasons. But yeah, so a hybrid of both.
Okay, a little bit of both. Okay, I see the areas that are designated as parking. I suppose that would make sense.
Hey, Scott, I have a question. On these streets and private drives, are they? I'm sure you or Steven or somebody ensures that emergency vehicles can go all through those little little corners and curves and all that stuff. It's elegant design, but I always like to make sure that you can get a fire truck in there and that sort of thing.
Yep, so we weigh on that a little bit. Primarily, most of that comes from the fire districts. So they do a review of every building of what angle they want to fight a fire in it from and where they come from and making sure they can get out and don't get trapped, things of that sort. So that's, yeah, and that's all covered in our code as well. So yeah, definitely those things come out through the process.
Awesome, thanks.
Scott, can you help me understand exactly which city, which streets would be built as part of Phase One that are city? Because it says future public street and I don't know if future means part of Phase One or later.
Yeah, and I might default to Steve, the original kind of layout and pricing for those estimates. So I think you're talking about that southwestern corner essentially, right? On each side of it?
I mean, what are we talking about? Because we have the overall plan, that's great. But I want to make sure I understand exactly what is being built as Phase One, what we're getting for our investment, so to speak.
And Steve, or Steve or Max, you maybe speak to that. And I think in the next one, obviously, making sure that we have a figure showing what's covered by, you know, any kind of development agreement type.
So the first phase, looking at the drawing that's on the screen, is the right side of the screen. And that curvilinear road going through the middle that ties on to Cobble Drive runs over and ties then on to sixty-four fifty Road directly across from Spruce Point. And that will be the first loop that'll serve the first phase. There'll be a second, go ahead.
So that whole road is getting built from the northwest corner where it hits sixty-four fifty and then all the way down to Cobble Drive?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that ancillary leg of that that ties over also off of your curvilinear drive to sixty-four fifty, will that be constructed as Phase One as well or will that be Phase Two, since it's a primary road?
The extension that goes to the right of the senior living, is that the part?
Yes, we're in the arrow that is, we're in the cursor right now.
That won't be built as part of the first phase, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Miles, are these, you're going to own these and rent them? Is that my understanding?
Yep. And, you know, you guys, I think, know my history, but we are good managers of residential communities. You can see that in our manufactured home stuff. I've honestly never done an apartment project like this, but I'm confident we can manage it very effectively and keep it up to our standards. Besides, I deliver it.
It's an exciting project. We definitely hear that we, that I feel like we need more housing options in our community. We know vacancy rates are really low and rent prices are high. And I think that's a supply and demand issue. So it's really an exciting project in that regard.
Another question concerning access. We're looking over on Phase One, Building Eight. Was there ever a discussion about tying in access to Chupita Drive where that emergency fire lane is?
You know, we had that drawn originally. And when we went through the annexation process a couple of years ago, Chupita Drive remains a county road. And at that time, the county didn't want connectivity from the project and it didn't seem like the city did. There are sightline issues and different things about Cobble Drive that, or excuse me, about Chupita Drive that you're better, you know, getting the traffic accessing Chupita farther apart, which is through the two existing intersections. So we did look at that. Now, there's a traffic study that we're doing that will prove that from an engineering perspective. But we, at this time, we weren't planning on connecting to Chupita.
Excellent, thank you.
Questions or comments from my Council for either Bill Bell or Matt Miles or Steve Stevenson?
Yeah, I like the concept and I agree that it's obvious that we need more of this kind of housing. I often hear a story that someone's offered a job here in Montrose and then they can't find a place to live. So I think this certainly helps to address that. And I like what you've outlined here. I think it's good for the community.
I agree. I think it's a very exciting project. I think it's going to have a very positive impact on Montrose. And as we've stated a number of times, housing is a critical issue in the city of Montrose and Montrose County. So I think it's a great project to look at and I'm really excited to see what we report.
Great. Thank you for being with us this morning and being able to answer our questions and look forward to discussing it and figuring out the city's role and helping with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is Item D, which is a lease agreement for the Historic Depot Building. I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Anna Nordefield.
Thank you. I believe that also Ken Huff may be on this call with us, Greg and Lisa, from the Historical Society. So I'm not sure if he'll have anything to say, but if we could elevate him to a panelist, just in case, that'd be great. Thank you. So before you today is consideration of an extension. Really, it's sort of entering into a new five-year lease with the Historical Society, the Montrose County Historical Society. Currently, they lease the Historic Depot Building, which is located at twenty-one North Rio Grande. It's the location of the Montrose County Historical Museum. And there's also lots of wonderful photos and historic documents and artifacts stored there. The Historical Society would like to enter into another five-year lease of that building. And currently, unless you tell me otherwise, the city doesn't have any different plans for using that building right now. And we've embarked on a lot of great partnerships with the Historical Society and the museum, and we'd love to continue those. And it helps to have that building as the location as we do walking tours and other events that link our downtown further west with other buildings on Main Street. And so for your consideration as the lease, there's a clean version that shows what's proposed and also a red line version in your packet. You'll notice that there are minimal changes. The one change worth noting is the rent. So the rent previously was for one dollar a month. Modern agreements, as I learned from our city attorney, even though this is a nominal amount, are starting to use increments more of ten to twenty dollars a year. So we updated that. It still is a very generous lease arrangement for the Montrose County Historical Society. And other than that, we're not proposing any changes. If you'd like to consider this lease for approval at a council meeting, we'll bring it to you at the next council meeting.
And the other pretty significant change that I noticed when I was reading through this is Item sixteen, the non-liability of lessor per damages. And there is a pretty significant change in the monetary limitations liability-wise. So I assume that's just relevant to modern insurance rates?
They, CJIC changed their amounts that a city can be sued. So we raised those amounts so we're covered.
Just to kind of comply with modern language and modern insurance.
There was a gap between what the old insurance was and what we're liable that we'd be on the boat for. So that's why it was raised.
Just updating the language to make it right. Got it. Thank you.
Do we do, we're doing a five-year lease. Do we ever set it up where we have a tie of five-year lease with the renewable five years with that?
Sometimes we do. I think in the past, even correct me if I'm wrong, we used five years because there may be another opportunity that City Council would like to pursue. And so we set it up that you renew it every five years. Steven, do you have anything else to add?
No, it gives Council flexibility on a prime piece of real estate in a really good location. And, you know, I don't want to be freaking out the lesses, but, you know, it's like we just don't want to have councils hands be tied for long periods of time.
I really like it. At one point in time, the state trust tied up school trust land in ninety-nine year leases and has regretted it recently. So I think this is appropriate. I think this is a great partnership and a great thing we do for the Historic Museum. But I like that we aren't considering things like ninety-nine year leases.
I like the idea of the five-year lease because you can see the adaptation of language and insurance requirements and liabilities and stuff. And by doing that on a five-year period, it gives us the opportunity to really make sure that the language is consistent with whatever is currently happening, both in liability, insurance, rent, et cetera. I think it's a great idea to do a five-year.
Any other comments or questions? So we'll see this on an upcoming council agenda for our final approval and vote. Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Would you like to hear anything from Mr. Huff?
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Huff. I'll give you an opportunity to say something so that you don't feel like you showed up here for nothing this morning.
Well, thank you for considering our lease. We're in agreement with all I just heard. We're also not excited about a ninety-nine year lease, although that building, to move it, would be a ninety-nine year project. Other than that, I appreciate the thought that the insurance is reviewed every five years and all the rest of the issues that go on. We also want to thank the city for their continuous support of the museum and all that it represents as well as the founding families of Montrose and Montrose County.
Fantastic. How's that new roof holding up?
Well, it took a few more times to find every last little leak, but it's holding up so well that it dried out some of the interior of the building and some of the ceiling in the old ticket office, which is sixteen feet off the ground, are starting to crack. So we're going to face a new issue right after we close here of fixing some of that.
It's not one thing, it's another in an old building like that, I suppose.
Oh, yes. Something built in nineteen twelve doesn't necessarily look as good as it should in twenty-twenty.
So how much longer are you open for the season before you close? Because it's not a winter building, as I understand.
No, we don't have heat and limited air conditioning inside the facility. And thanks to the ceiling, we've worked it out with Mark Armstrong and his staff that we're going to try to close around the eighteenth of September so they can get in there with the kind of lifts they need to replaster that ceiling.
Okay, great. Any questions about the building or about this? Thank you so much for joining us this morning for our meeting and we appreciate what you guys are doing over there and taking care of that old building.
Yeah, we have a lot of fun with it. Come see us.
It's a neat place for sure. Okay, next on our agenda is Item E, the Gray and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Grant Resolution. I think we do this every year. I will turn it over to Grant Coordinator Kendall Fainer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Before you today is a resolution for your consideration, authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Department of Local Affairs for the Gray and Black authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Department of Local Affairs for the Gray and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Program. We've done this a couple of times. We've applied twice, I believe. This is a program created by state statute. It's funded through the Marijuana Tax Cash Fund. The purpose is to provide financial assistance grants annually to local law enforcement and district attorneys through local governments for the investigation and prosecution of costs associated with the unlicensed marijuana cultivation or distribution operations. So again, this is the gray and black market marijuana, not the legalized marijuana here in Colorado. This grant covers personnel, overtime, contractual services, equipment and supplies, travel, pre-trial incarceration, medical expenses related to injury or exposure, investigation, purchase of information and evidence, et cetera. A resolution is required to apply or opt-in to this grant program. The resolution before you allows the filing of the grant application, states that the city will spend the money appropriately and report on it, that the grant will comply with Tabor. On that note, the city debruised all grant revenue in 2006, so we're okay there. And it authorizes the city manager to execute, to execute the grant contract. Again, we have received funds in the past from this grant program. The last round, we received $81,455. The round before that, $69,446. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, however, the statewide program has seen drastic cuts. I just looked this up. I believe under the last round, there was actually $6 million allocated to this program. And this next round, there's only $810,000 for the whole state. So grant awards are expected to be substantially lower, but every bit, little bit helps. The funds in the past, the city of Montrose Police Department, we've used them for drug task force wages as well as for investigating those black market marijuana cases, as well as for purchase of equipment for investigations. And this will appear before you, I believe it's on the September 15th, City Council for your consideration. And then deadline for this grant is September 30th. So with that, I'll take any questions and thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about this? I think it's pretty straightforward. This may be the easiest item on our agenda. So I'll just go ahead and thank you, Kendall, for presenting that. We look forward to seeing it on a council agenda for an upcoming vote.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, next on our agenda, Item F, Woodgate Subdivision Sewer System Rehabilitation Contract Award. I will turn it over to City Engineer Scott Murphy for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will screen share here to show some cool pictures. Oops, wrong screen. Hold on. Maybe my millennial didn't do my technical stuff here. Okay, try it again. Okay. Which screen are you seeing? Do you see?
A bunch of coral underwater, I think.
Okay, all right. I will. Right screen. I gotta put on the right screen so my microphone works so I don't go silent again. So. Okay, so you guys seeing the memo now?
Yes. Yep.
So this was a budgeted project. The, give you some of the history on the Woodgate subdivision. So look at this map here. This is the new rec center. When Ogden Woodgate Roundabout, going south on Woodgate, you end up in this kind of southern subdivision here on the east side, just called the Woodgate subdivision. Brought into, or was developed originally under county standards, had a, as we understand it, piecing together the history. It's a sewer collection system that went down to a sewage lagoon. So it was dense enough that, you know, onsite septic tanks, which are typically down in the county, wouldn't work. But they were far enough from the sewer at the time that they put it into a sewage lagoon. Over time, that failed slash public safety standards change. And, and Greg can let you, Greg, can you let Ryan in to the thing? It's the links on the agenda. So over time, the that, that all changed and they were forced onto the sewer system, the city sewer system, to meet modern health, public safety standards and health standards. So that occurred in the 90s. With that, some sewer extensions were performed that brought sewer tanks out to this area. The original distribution system that covered the whole neighborhood remained the same. This system was built, and I'll show you some pictures here just kind of for fun to show you what we're up against. But the system was built with essentially thin-walled plastic irrigation pipe, not built to any kind of standard at all. Essentially, you know, everything you could do wrong in a sewer system was, was done wrong. So a lot of unsupported pipes, you have structural failures. A lot of pipe were just, you know, pipes are meeting at each end but not connected. So you get a lot of root intrusion. It has a lot of irrigation water and cottonwood trees. And so there's places where it's, pipes have been, are routinely completely blocked by roots. A lot of places where, you know, taps were made to the line by just breaking into it and hitting with a hammer and putting in a sewer pipe and hoping for the best. A lot of things working against it. Essentially, the entire system has, has reached a point of failure. Where our crews are out there, you know, maintaining, jetting, doing root treatments, having to go and repair collapsed sections on an annual basis. And, you know, kind of speaking to the access, so the system itself was built in a lot of cases in people's backyards. So here's just a quick photo tour to give you a feel of, of kind of what we're up against from a design standpoint. So trying to rehab a project that had sewer lines that aren't built to a standard or in a location that meets any standards. So generally inaccessible. So these pictures show where the lines are, these green lines. So a lot of times going through mature landscaping in the people's backyards, along fences. Imagine trying to dig up a sewer line in this kind of case. You know, in some cases, under retaining walls. Just, we, we have standards for a reason and then that's, it's great now. This is just an artifact of some of the previous stuff that wasn't built to a standard.
Is there an opportunity to use like that pipe bursting technique that we learned about a few years ago? The council learned about, you all know about it. But is there an opportunity to replace, replace it that way without digging up a lot of stuff? Or are you suggesting that new routes even need to be laid down?
Um, so yeah, I'll, I'll dive into all that. Yep. So we're using a multitude or every tool in our toolbox essentially to try and limit the impacts. But yeah, I just wanted to give you a quick feel. You know, this is a end of a sewer line in somebody's backyard here up through in areas like this. So get a feel for it. I think that's the last of the pictures here. So, you know, right along underneath fences, things of that sort. So long way of saying, you know, pretty rough system that's challenged to get replaced. So recognizing that, the other challenge was getting the system, you know, mapped, understanding where everything was in order to know what we have where and what needs replacing and determine its condition. So this project was managed in-house. We went through and, and to the extent that we could, there's some areas that were just plain inaccessible. Cambered every line, traced, mapped, and put together a scope to rehabilitate the entire system. The tools in the toolbox for that include, you know, some areas we have no choice but to dig up. For the most part, those, those are isolated, the 10 to 20-foot stretches where, you know, pipes have collapsed or we have, you know, incorrectly placed taps that are just punching through the line. We go through, do a little spot repairs to get the collapsed lines repaired. Go in and then insert manholes or in some cases, these small basins that we can do localize, digging on a smaller scale in people's backyards to get access ports on the ends of all of the lines. And once that's completed, we then have access to go in and do both pipe bursting in some cases where, which is where you run a pilot rod through the line, grab onto a new pipe and then crack the old pipe as you pull it back and pull in a new line without having to dig up the typical open cut trench. You just have to dig up at each end. And then in addition to that, cured and placed pipelining. And so that's when you bring a, you know, kind of soft type membrane that runs down the line. And then robotically, you're able to run under, inside the line after doing that, reconnect the new taps and put in a seal. The kind we're using on this is a UV cured. Another challenge this neighborhood has is a lot of the lines are six inches in diameter, which is pretty small for doing that kind of work. So it requires going to a higher end. Typically, these kind of pipeliners are steam cured, which are a lot easier to do, but they're a lot thicker and won't leave us enough room to do maintenance work. And so we're using ultraviolet cured lining system. So all of those together create the toolbox. And, and we're, we're implementing all of them throughout the neighborhood, depending on each application, because each one's a little different. So we designed the project in-house kind of through COVID, put it out to bid on July 30th. Three bids. All three from Montrose, Haynes Excavation, Skip Houston and Ridgeway Valley. All three of these contractors are great, reputable local contractors. People, a good chunk of the work would be subcontracted. So the cured and placed lining, which is a big portion of the work, specialty contract work with specialty equipment. So they use a, in the case of a little bidder, which was Haynes, outfit out of the front range. So a little bid was $972,000. We, because we, this is a city project, our city design, we don't have any outside review or outside survey costs. So no design support contract in this case. So I've, since two weeks from now, so if you guys would like to see it, we'd be voting on this on the 15th of September. The product itself would start this fall. The hope would be to get a lot of the excavation work done and spot repairs done now. And then, because the cure and place work can be done at any time through the winter. So and they're pretty busy, so it's good to get on their schedule. And then targeting to have the project completely wrapped up by May of next year. All the work will take place within the neighborhood, so no major traffic impacts to arterial streets. As far as the budget side of things, so we had $600,000 in this year's budget for the project. That was, you know, when we started scoping this last year, we admittedly weren't aware of just how bad it was. No one had ever been able to get in to camera a lot of the lines because of the work required even just to get in and look at them. You know, doing that. So the project grew a little bit. So with that, we kind of to try and span two budget years. So, you know, looking at the burn rate of, of what'll hit this year, so that $600,000, 400 will hit this year. So there'll be a little bit of surplus at the end of this year on that line. But for the balance in the capital line of 20, the 2021 budget. The project does include a 10% contingency. Make everyone aware, this is probably one of the higher risk jobs we've ever done from a contracting standpoint. Just because we, we've done all the diligence we can to know everything we're going to go into. That should cover it. But it's, it's just unknown. So, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if, if we discover something that may require some additional funding. Until we get into there. But I'm pretty confident. I mean, we've done every bit of diligence we can to this project scope on the front end. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Are there a bunch of utility easements there that allow us to go dig in people's yards? Are we gonna have to be compensating folks? I mean, I think they benefit from a new improved sewer system, but how exactly is all of that working?
Yeah, most of the, almost all the lines, that's one thing they did get right, do have easements. And then there's a couple, just because of the topography that we've worked out with homeowners to access across. We will restore everything. The contract's written, so it's, we'll restore any disturbance as good as or better than, than existed prior to construction. Just working with the homeowners there. And again, given kind of the low invasive nature of it, for the most part, we're able to, to generally stay out of, out of people's yards. And limit that to the extent possible.
And Scott, when you're pulling that through there, what effect is that going to have on the existing homeowner's lines? Are they going to have some liability if their line is a problem or with the pipe bursting, how do we make that connection back to them? Do you have to take that out?
Yep. So it's all, it'll all be improved over what's there now. So all the service reconnections, either on the cured and place or the pipe bursting, we reconnect the mains and we, we bypass the route. And so during the construction, we will maintain all sewer flows as they, as they were. And then post-construction, you know, they'll still remain responsible for their sewer laterals. They'll just be in a lot better place now because where they came in the terminal line will be accessible. Places where we're lining them or doing pipe bursting where we reconnect, we are, you know, doing a kind of a belt and suspender. So we're doing the connection to the main and also doing kind of a second layer of defense against root intrusion. Right now, some of those are, I mean, there's cavities around the pipes where literally they would just break the pipe with a hammer and stick the sewer line into it. It's, it creates problems for both the main line and the service line. All that will be drastically improved from, from what is there. And if there are any problems on the laterals, they remain with the homeowner, but they'll be in a better position to take care of their own private service lines. And almost everybody we've talked to in the neighborhood is, is well aware of the problems they've had over the years. A lot of them are having to bet their private lines pretty routinely. And they're all pretty excited about the project for that reason.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from council? Great. Thank you very much, Scott Murphy, for giving us the rundown on that project. We look forward to seeing it on our agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, that was our last discussion item. So now moving on, we've got general city council discussion. Are there any particular issues that anyone needs to talk about at today's work session? In no particular order, just wave your hand. Okay. Then I will go to staff comments. Are there any staff, department heads that wish to? Okay, I'll, Bill Bell.
Uh, we, so I apologize. This is my fault. We were planning on talking about improvements to La Raza Park neighborhood at this work session. And I forgot to put it on the agenda. So Scott was just asking me, hey, are we talking about that? I forgot to put it on. It looks like we would have run out of time anyway, so maybe it worked out okay. Is everyone comfortable with us putting those discussions on the September 14th work session? And then we'll make sure we reach out to the neighborhood as well so they can chime in via Zoom.
Yes, please.
Chime in or listen in? Because usually on a work session, they would in chime in.
Yeah, or listen in, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure we all know what's happening. Okay.
So they could listen into the ideas. Scott's already prepared. He was ready for today. Just ideas on what exactly we could do and on some sidewalk connectivity, pros and cons, costs, those types of things, and then also improvements to the park itself.
Fantastic. I think we've been looking forward to hearing that. And it sounds like putting it, having it as an agenda item is going to be important. So it would be best if we do that on the 14th.
Great. And at what point will council have a discussion about what we as a city need to do or look at so that what happened with the perchloride tanks doesn't happen again? Are we, are we going to address that or are we, are we done with it?
Yeah, we've talked, well, we've heard from most of council on that issue and we've talked with Archie and with the planning staff and Anne's done a lot of this work. We just patented the code and so now it's time to go section by section through the city code to update the code. And so under the building code section, planning and zoning section, I think we could do that section first. And then we can talk about changing our building code to where it defines what requires a building permit, what requires site development, those types of things. And that's where we'd have that discussion. And then council has full authority to change the code. So in the future, it's a little different. There's no guarantee because of the particular railroad use in that corridor that we would be able to do everything the community wants us to be able to do. But we can talk about all the things available to city council and then change the code to make that better.
I'd love to see us have an option on that building code to say something concerning a permanent structure erection versus a temporary permanent structure. I think that's what we're running into there is that, as been noted by other council members, their temporary structure is becoming permanent.
Yeah, and, and when we talk in details about the code, there'll be things like, just because it requires a building permit doesn't mean you can say no. It just means how, it means maybe the process they follow is a little different, maybe a little more transparent, that kind of thing. So, but we can talk through all those. If it's all right, could, maybe we could bring that up for discussion with council after we get through the budget retreat. Just because staff time is really limited between now and September tenth council budget retreat. So maybe in October, we could start that discussion if that would be.
Yeah, I look forward to starting our, our, talking about code with that one because I think that's been on all of our minds. Great. Okay. Thank you. Any other items for work session that we need to talk about?
No, just in, in general, there's a lot of development heading our way. So a lot of people have been holding off on their projects to see how COVID's going to impact the region and the community. We've talked about it before. Montrose really hasn't seen much of a slowdown. In fact, it's picked up on the construction side of things. And so we talked a little bit about Matt Miles' project here. We have a reunion meeting tomorrow. We're going to talk about development. And then we just met with David Coker this morning about some other housing developments. So there's just a lot of development coming forward, commercial and residential. It's an exciting time. It's just difficult to make sure that we plan that growth responsibly and maintain adequate resources to make sure everything gets done, not just growth. Maintenance is important as well as growth.
So because we see these projects as they come to us, like in an order, are you, is, is city staff managing? Like, I'd hate to just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna say yes to this project. We can invest, we can move money and, and from the general fund to cover the water fund. And then a third project comes along and we say, oh, you know, we, we wish we would have known about that. I mean, what's my question? Are you looking at all of these projects as a whole and then balancing how council approaches them? Because we just kind of see them as they come.
We're gonna have thirty thousand foot.
Yeah.
Most of the things, by the time we have the discussions like we did today at work session, they've been in the works for six to twelve months. And so we do see them coming. And usually in my annual eval, I'll write a lot of that stuff to kind of summary of this whole past year and where we're headed for next year. If we want to add some things, some discussions just related to that every quarter or something, that might be good. But individually, I try to talk to each of you about it just so it kind of stays on your radar. But as far as big picture, yeah, we have that big picture. We see things coming down. A lot of it just happens to be coming around the same time. Usually it's not. Usually it's one big project a year or every couple of years. It's just kind of an unusual time for us. But yeah, we try to see that big picture and put it all in perspective and balance it all out. And also our regular capital projects we have to think about as well. Water towers.
Right.
Sewer line extensions, things like that. And then street improvements, of course, and other capital stuff. And another thing we've been talking about recently is with Jackie as our parks superintendent, he's really focusing on the capital needs of our park system. And we talked a lot about that at our department head budget retreat. And we're going to see that in the next several years, some big picture things. But we'll talk about a lot of those during our budget retreat and then during our public open house as well, some of what's on the horizon for the next five years.
Great. Thank you. Any other items before we adjourn? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to, well, we don't vote. We just adjourn. We're done.